Welcome to the September 2nd, 2021 City of Manistee Planning Commission Meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are you ready? Yeah. Okay. Captain. This weekend, Captain. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Here.
Commissioner Samansky.
Here.
Commissioner Remberto.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner McBride. Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitliff.
Here. Thank you. Revolve the agenda. At this time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the September 2nd, 2021 Agenda. Their motion.
I'd like to make an amendment to the Agenda. We've got minutes from August 11th we'd like to add in there that were not included in the Agenda here. And we'd also like to take off 314 SIB and off of old business as well.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Motion by Mick. Second by Bob. Any discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. This time, the Planning Commission can approve, can take action to approve the August 5th, 2021 meeting minutes. I motion to approve. Motion by Bob.
I'll second.
Second by Roger. Discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. This time, the Planning Commission can take action to approve the August 11th meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
A motion.
Motion by Pam.
Second.
By Mick. Discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Public hearing.
August 11th? Minutes?
Yep.
Oh, I thought that was the 5th.
Okay. My bad.
Long day.
I'm on top of it.
They talk about me.
They are.
Public hearing, Lake Winds PUD.
So, we're gonna, I believe we're gonna need a motion to open the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we can move into reading the notice and start hearing some comments.
Is there a motion to open the PUD? I motion. Motion by Bob. Second. Roger?
Yeah.
Discussion? None. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you.
You want to read that notice, Mark? Notice of public hearing? Should be the next page.
Okay. City of Manistee Planning Commission Notice of Public Hearing. City of Manistee Planning Commission will hold a public hearing 7:00 PM on Thursday, September 2nd, 2021, in the City of Manistee Council Chambers, 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan. To consider proposed planned unit development parcel ID 51-146-701-01, 51-146-702-08, 51-146- 03, Mark.
03, Mark. Instead of 08.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. I need my glasses.
Take your time.
Okay. 03, excuse me.
Oh.
Commonwealth Development Corporation of America and Riverside Housing Incorporated propose the new construction of 64 affordable rental apartments at the southeast corner of Veterans Oak Grove Drive and Washington Street in Manistee. Lake Winds apartment home, Lake, excuse me, Lake Winds Apartment Homes will involve redevelopment of an underutilized collection of partial parcels into a high-quality affordable/workforce housing that will meet significant, will meet the significant housing needs, need in Manistee County. 100% of the first floor units will be visible and at least 10% of the units will be barrier-free. Copy of the proposed planned unit development are available at, for review, at the city clerk's office, 70 Maple Street, Manistee, Michigan, on the city's webpage, www-manistee.gov, and Manistee County Planning Department, 395 Third. Interested parties are welcome to attend the hearing. Written comments with signatures can be submitted to the Manistee County Planning Department, 395 Third, Manistee, Michigan, 49660. Phone, 231-723-6041, by 12:00 PM, Wednesday, September 1st, 2021.
So now you can invite the public to come and make their comments. You can set your time limit and make sure everyone is heard.
Okay. At this time, we will entertain public comment. Please approach the podium if you have something to discuss or say. Name an address and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Jerry Homaniac. Dale and I, my husband.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Address.
Your address.
Jerry Homaniac, 267 Washington Street. So, my husband Dale and I own property directly adjacent on Washington Street next to this project. So, thanks for your willingness to serve. I want to thank you for your time. I know it probably isn't always easy. Also, I was unaware of the deadline yesterday till I read it in today's newspaper. So, you all got this email to you last night, so you're gonna hear it again, I guess. So, first, I find it ironic that an area that was once considered fit only for industry is now suddenly found fit to house approximately 200 people on a corner. There was a two-part series of articles published in Manistee News Advocate dated February 14th and February 15th. No mention was made of a new building project in either of those articles. When did this project come into play? I understand this project is to house tenants from the standard sites on 12th Street and on Vine Street. It was mentioned that these standard sites, other than Century Terrace and Harborview, did not meet MISTDA criteria for the tax credits because of walkability issues to pharmacies and grocery stores. The 12th Street sites are 2/10ths of a mile from a pharmacy and a grocery store, and Vine Street's about the same. Both are closer than Washington Street will be. In fact, there's no pharmacy within walkable distance from Washington Street. I suspect the real issue is the condition of the property. If a property is fit for demolition, tax credits won't be authorized by MISTDA. Mr. McKibben Copas did state these standard sites would be demolished in an article in MNA dated 8/17. Tell it like it is. How did this happen? Number two, how did this happen? How did these units fall so far into disrepair? Number three, why did this happen? Number four, why should any of us believe this project will be maintained any better than the current locations? Number five, are the people that currently reside in these properties aware that they will be relocated to warehouse-style housing, possibly on the second floor? That they will no longer have their own backyard, driveway, or private outdoor living space? How do they feel about that? How is that better for them? Do they even have a voice? In MNA article dated 8/17, Mr. McKibben Copas states, "We want to create a place where the City of Manistee income levels are representative, not just the very poor and not just those who are more well-off, but what some folks may call working folks." Pretty words, but guess what? I found the income range of $15,000 to $40,000 is not representative of the City of Manistee. According to census.gov, the median household income in Manistee in 2019, which was the closest I could obtain, was $50,000 and $50,055. The middle-class median people are still not assisted. This is how income, this is a low-income housing unit, call it what it is. Zoning regulations state a maximum dwelling unit per acre of eight. The proposed plan is 10.8. I suppose that variant will fall under an exception in Section 1870 Planned Unit Development. Also in Section 1870-G Decisions, it states that such approval shall be designated to protect natural resources, the health, safety, and welfare of the community, including-
Thank you. You have three minutes, so.
Oh, nice.
Name an address, please.
Hi, my name's David Burns at 327 Monroe Street in Manistee, Michigan. I'm here in support of the proposal for the housing development. The, I've, I'm a licensed clinical social worker by profession and training. I am retired. My most recent job was as the Director of the Department of Human Services for the District of Columbia. And I ran projects similar to this, and also was the Head of Human Services in the Department of Labor for the State of Arizona. But here, this is my home. I would love to see more housing in Manistee. I think this is actually a great location. It's pretty walkable for the downtown. When we were doing similar projects in other locations, we tried to use the rule of thumb that it should be, the main facilities and support services should be within walking distance of a mom pushing a baby carriage. And I think that this meets that criteria. I do think that there's a housing stock that needs to be refurbished or a number of people that are living in substandard housing. Think this would provide a great alternative for them. I don't see that there's a lot of other locations that people have proposed where we could build similar projects. The funding opportunities here are limited, and this is a chance for us to actually add 64 very nice units, a nice mix of two, one, two, three, four-bedroom apartments, a great place for them to be. I would recommend full involvement of the existing residents in the housing that we would like to have them move from, and also encourage Clint and others to engage the Human Services Collaborative of Manistee, to come together with all of the Human Services agencies to prepare those that would be moving into this housing, so that they're ready, so they have income, supports, childcare, and ready to move and maintain their new residence. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Finishing Jerry's letter. Such conditions of approval shall be designed to protect natural resources, the health, safety, and welfare of the community, including those who would use the proposed development. This means to me that each and every one of you are responsible, held to this, to that my questions are. Has there or will there be a traffic study done? In addition of 50 to 100 cars, approximately 200 people at the intersection of two heavily-traveled streets, I would think would be a concern, in spite of the fact the developer in his letter to the City of Manistee dated on 7/30/21 does not anticipate any negative effects. He must have a crystal ball. I believe I can speak for the entire population when I say I'm requesting a traffic feasibility study to be completed by an independent party with published results. The US-31 bridge is going to be shut down for an extended period in the very near future. Oak Grove Veterans Drive and Washington Street will become US-31. That corner will be an unbelievable mess. Has there or will there be a sewer capability study done? Again, the additional 64-plus toilets and 200 people brings concern in spite of the fact that the developer is not aware of any sewer sanitary capability issues in the area. I guess he's never spoken to the residents of Quincy Street. They have a different story. Who's responsible for the damage to existing homes in the area if the sewers fail? Again, I believe I can speak for the entire neighborhood. I am requesting a sewer capability and stormwater system evaluation be conducted by an independent party with published results. The developer does also acknowledge we anticipate that there will be a normal increase in emergency calls? Wonderful. That's just what we were hoping for in our neighborhood. More emergency and police calls? If you listen to the scanner at all, "normal" is an understatement for the likes of Century Terrace. There is an oil rig either on or directly adjacent to this proposed project property. Has there been soil survey conducted? Has it been confirmed there's no brown contamination? Actively working train track borders at the back of the project property? Kids love trains. Given the absence of a backyard, they will explore. Who will be held liable when a child is injured? Worse, same with the oil well. You are held accountable by your own rules for each of these concerns. You are responsible to the community to see that these things are addressed, and if you are not willing to step up, perhaps you should step down. Respectfully submitted, Jerry Dale Homaniac. But I'm sure most of us on Quincy feel the same way we do. I just ask one question to all of you. Mark, you used to live on Quincy. Would you want this if you still did live there? It's just a question I ask. Would you want it in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Schultz. I live at 502 Second Street here in town. I wrote a little thing. Well, see, I, I used to live in Luddington when I moved to Manistee, and I've lived near a lot of low-income properties throughout my life. And I can tell you, it's a roll of the dice, whether or not you'll get good neighbors or, well, honestly, lowlifes. Some have been really good people, others have engaged in an assortment of criminal activities. I even had one threaten me and my father with a shovel. He almost jumped up. He was gonna jump over a property line in the cell doors, over the fence. So, among an assortment of complaints about such people in my neighborhood, just here over on Second Street. So, we've had, we've had a prostitute, we've had drug dealing, loud music late at night, dogs barking, various forms of neglect of animals. Some people who live near me in a rental unit, they were convicted on home invasion. Fortunately, it didn't happen in my neighborhood, but they invaded people's homes at night. I don't know what the rest of the folks in this town want exactly, how they, who they prefer for neighbors, but from my own experience, there's a substantial risk when you're talking about low-income residences, especially when you're gonna cluster all these people together. I, I go on walks on a riverwalk, and I can hear Century Terrace people fighting, screaming each other obscenities. I imagine that's going to be moved into this new location. I have a concern about that, too. Yeah, so I would suggest that this commission consider the social impact of other existing low-income complexes around the town and take that into consideration while you decide whether or not to approve this project. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Stockey, and I live at 169 Harrison Street. And a few years ago, we were in this same predicament when Olson Lumber Company was proposed for this development. I understand there is a need for affordable housing, but this is not being worded as affordable housing. This is relocating people from the low-income housing. And my biggest concern, and I think most people in Manistee, when we drive around and we look at these beautiful places that have been built, I can remember trick-or-treating at Century Terrace with my children 40 years ago, 35 years ago. You wouldn't do that now. Why? What's happened? Where is the management and the accountability for the properties that have already been built? We look up at Ritz Park when that complex was built. I had a daughter that lived there. It was beautiful. Would I want my daughter living there now? Absolutely not. So, the people that are building and proposing, I think, and as Manistee as a whole, we need to know, who's managing? Where's the accountability? Anytime you live in an apartment complex or a housing association, there are rules. There are rules to upkeep, to personal interactions with your neighbors, and there's accountability when these are not being met. But we're not seeing that in any of our projects. When I stood before you for Olson Lumber, at that point, I had talked to the 911. There was 300 calls in one year to Century 21, or Century Terrace. Why? Why does it keep happening over and over and over again? And now yet we want, we already have another complex where Washington School is, that's gonna, looks beautiful, but what's it gonna look like in two years from now? Who's gonna manage it? Who's the accountability here? And this is gonna go again to this new project until something can be done about the current situations that we already have, their maintenance, their management. I think those things need to be addressed before you keep adding on more issues into the city. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jill Johnson, 184 Quincy Street. My concern is the property values. How will this affect them? And my other concern is the streets. Washington is busy, and if this proposed complex goes onto Veterans Memorial Highway, that will be very busy, too. And what about little children going out on the streets? I'm just, I'm real concerned about that. Also trespassing onto Quincy Street. We, we're gonna be living right behind. I just want you to consider that. Thank you.
I live on 221 Washington Street. Been a Papera-livinger in that neighborhood two, three, or four at a time for over 100 years. You know, and I, I guess my biggest thing about this thing is I'm all, I'm all for anything. You know, I'm like, if you want to make things great again, or make it better and improve, I'm all for it. But there, you have, there's just nothing that shows me that this is gonna be anything but the disaster it's gonna be. Take a ride up, take a ride up behind, up on the hill there. Just take a ride and look at those houses. Why do we believe that there's gonna be any rules enforced? We took a ride up there just before we came up tonight. Porches full, garbage bags this high and everything else, you know. Who's enforcing that? I mean, it gets deeper than that, because, you know, with Century Terrace and all that. I mean, it's just, this wonderful proposal and all that stuff, it all sounds great, until you have to live by people that are not responsible and are not held accountable. And those are the, that's just the way it is. There's really nothing else to say about it. It's not gonna be enforced. Nobody's gonna tell me that it will.
Any other comments? Any other comments? None? No. Close the public-
No, 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 no. We'd like to hear from the developer to present here. So, we invite you guys to, thank you.
Answer some of the questions, maybe.
Hi, I'm John Nessberg, Vice President of Development with Commonwealth Development. And, you know, I didn't here to prepare a full presentation, but we were working alongside Manistee Housing Commission on the Century Terrace project and on this one as well. And we feel that, you know, this location with a good wooded buffer to the south and kind of closer to a more industrial area is a good, good location for this project. It's zoned residential. It's been an underutilized site for, for years. And I think, I don't know if Clint has anything to say, but I would be happy to, you know, answer, address any questions as to any, any concerns or, or anything we can address on that matter.
I guess I would like to say that this is the opportunity where the federal government finally is putting money back into the properties. And they have, over two, three decades, have taken money away from public housing and let it go into disrepair. Now is the opportunity, through this program using low-income housing tax credits that are pushed through by HUD to do this, is to take care of the backlog of maintenance and to take care of buildings that are beyond their life cycle and need to be replaced and to be fixed up. So, these are why things got that lack of funding. Here's now the opportunity to have the funding to fix things.
Yeah, and I'll add on that a little bit. So, the, the current Housing Commission properties are public housing, which, as Clint said, is dramatically underfunded, which is the reason they went into disrepair. This is the Lytec program, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program, where, one, there's gonna be oversight as far as inspection, regular inspections done on the units and the property itself. And, two, there's additional funding that can be brought back into the project after every 15 years to rehab them and obviously make it look like new. And Commonwealth, we, we own projects across the country and develop, developments across the country. We've, we've had very happy partners in communities all across the country for that. And we are gonna be partnering with the Housing Commission on, on managing the project and making sure that the, the, the property management and the property looks very nice, where if you go on our website, you can see that, that all of our developments are, are very attractive and don't, are, are a boost to the, to the local community. And I guess I'll add, keep adding stuff as it kind of comes to mind here. These will be, obviously, nice new units, built to a high-green standard. There's also gonna be a number of amenities. We're gonna have a clubhouse building that'll have community, or that'll have community space, computer center for residents, exercise room. All units will have in-unit washers and dryers and ceiling fans, blinds, very, very nice, high-quality units and attractive. And there's, from, from the housing studies, and we're, we're having a market study done as well, there's, there's a big need, need for these apartments. And, yeah.
Have we met Mark?
Mark, have we met with him? Have you met with these people?
No. No. Sorry.
Yeah, yep, so Century Terrace and Harborview, we're about to close on that. Rehab- Yeah, yep, so Century Terrace and Harborview, we're about to close on that rehab, rehab, and that's gonna be over $10 million of rehabilitation that's gonna go into those buildings. And that's through the same, same program. That'll be, yeah, all, all nice new appliances, flooring, really making the buildings look like new.
Pardon? Yes, go ahead.
Unless you're done, are you--
Nope, go ahead and ask.
Well, such as young lady brought up, as far as the testing for your soil and your traffic and lighting and sewer, I'm sure that's all been checked over and approved and we're all capable of handling it?
Yep, we have Phase One environmental that's underway, and in order to get the project closed, we need to have all the environmental work signed off on. If Phase One comes up with anything in the soils, we'll have Phase Two done, and they'll do testing and make sure that, obviously, the soils are clean. We have, along with the Phase One, we're doing a noise analysis to ensure that the buildings, the railroad noise isn't above a certain decibel level on the exterior that the state and HUD both require. So there's, there are a number of, yeah, along with, you know, sewer, water sewer availability, this, these, these are all boxes that we'll have to check with the state and with HUD before we--
Then they brought up above a train, will there, will there be a separation between your property and the train tracks so they can't get into one another?
Yeah, currently, we're, we're showing a retention pond on the east side of the property. The buildings themselves are over 500, 400, 500 feet from the train tracks. But we can certainly incorporate, you know, any, any fencing that would be needed to--
Well, just to, you know--
Cover that.
Keep everybody where they belong.
Absolutely.
I think too, could we incorporate a fence behind the property along the forest line? That would keep people within our property line too.
Potentially, but I, I mean, with our other developments, there aren't any concerns with, with people, I guess, going--
I noticed, looking at the print on the south property line, there was a hunting blind. It might go in to discourage that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, you might let the neighbors know whoever it is, for all meaners. No, I'm done. Thank you, Mark.
What's the projected completion timeline for each of the projects?
So we would, we're applying for funding October 1, and we would, if we're successful with that, we would look to start construction next summer. And it'd be roughly 12 to 14-month construction period, so summer of 2023 is when it would be complete.
And Century Terrace and Harborview, the closing is anticipated October 1 on the properties. There's been some paperwork additions from HUD that we've been having to work with. And once closing, we, what's our new projection of completion of the rehabilitation at Century Terrace and Harborview?
That is gonna be a 12-month period, so about a year from October.
And where are those tenants going to be housed while--
We're relocating them within the buildings.
Yeah, so we've opened up about 20% of the units as vacant units, and we're only gonna, we're gonna be starting on Century Terrace and then moving to Harborview and then relocating tenants within the buildings so that there, there isn't any need to move them off-site.
Relocation is all covered under process?
Yeah.
Taken care of for residents?
Yep, there's, we're required to follow the Uniform Relocation Act, which has guidances and ensures that it's, we're following those procedures for relocation.
You mentioned about onsite management. Okay, I've seen this before. When Century Terrace first opened, they had people onsite all the time. Same in Harborview. Then all of a sudden, there's no more. You have to have your keys and everything to get in. It's the same thing gonna happen here, where we're just for a few years have it and it could disappear again. Is that gonna, can you guarantee that that's not gonna happen?
So we, we're gonna have an onsite office at Lake Winds. It'll, it'll either be a part-time manager or, or full-time. We'll, we'll make that decision, and the Housing Commission's current staff is in Harborview, so they'll float between Harborview and that, the new development.
Excuse me, John, you currently float between Harborview and Century Terrace.
But you used to have people on staff at each building. What happened?
Jay Wasinski.
What?
The gentleman who was director for multiple years who embezzled.
So-- Bob, you could always make that a stipulation as well of any, any granting of this, and if they didn't follow through on it, you could revoke their PUD. The other aspect of that is Century Terrace currently does not have any kind of way for us to revoke that, so--
Yeah, I just don't wanna see this project go the same direction that has gone.
Absolutely. And so we, along those lines, we have an operating budget we obviously submit to the state and HUD, and that includes, it, it looks at kind of the average operating expenses for developments across the state and make sure that you're, you're within those lines. So we're, we're budgeting well to, we're budgeting for a person for the next 20 years.
What are the income requirements and application requirements? And who, if anyone, gets first preference? Do local residents? Or can anyone from the state apply and move?
So 48 of the units will be assistance that's transferred from the existing Housing Commission properties, and those, those tenants will get kind of first say.
And there were 68?
Forty-eight, there's 64--
Sixty-four.
In this development, so 16 new units. And those residents will get the first, first say, but then it's, it's on a, essentially a first-cumverser basis. Anyone who wants to live in Manistee and meets the income restrictions can, can live there.
And you have 20% ongoing vacancy at the other two properties as they're being filled? So I'm assuming at least 20% of those would follow that same guideline? They'd be open to just about anybody?
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. Did you look at any other properties when, when you were doing this? And why did you choose this particular parcel compared to other available sites in Manistee?
Yeah, we pursued other properties, as I think was discussed a little bit before, the walk, walkability and walk score is a big factor. This is one of the few sites that, and the state has a scoring where it's walkscore.com, and you have to be close to a certain walk score, so it's, it's a little arbitrary. But this, this site is one of the few that's, you know, zoned residential and large enough, closer to downtown, and we felt that it was a, a good site, kind of bordering the industrial locations, and then a large wooded buffer to the south. We, we looked at, you know, potentially the existing Housing Commission property on Vine Street, but that site unfortunately just doesn't, doesn't score high enough to receive the funding we need. And there'd also be some issues as far as tenant relocations while the construction was going on there, if we did that. But it really comes down to the, the funding in this, yeah, the development just can't get, get funded in, in some of the other, other sites that might be out there.
And, and you mentioned about the, the trains, because again, I, I would think not only the, the potential danger, because that's also a staging area for the trains. It's not all that they just pass through there, they're also staying there, you know, it's a staging. So there's a lot of trains on and off, day and night. And have you done the noise study already?
It's underway. It's underway, so it'll be in the next two weeks or so, we'll have that done.
In reference to that comment, Mick, you understand they talked about relocating the train south of Manistee Lake. There's a study or--
There's a study, but it may be--
Going on for many years.
Well, I'm just--
Yeah, sure. Well, but I was talking about, you know, current--
Currently, yes.
I mean, I, I looked at a property that was close to the, the trains and, you know, I thought it was in a science fiction movie because at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, the bells and whistles and--
Yeah.
The vibrations are, are pretty awesome, and that's, you know, not that far away. I mean--
Yeah, and, and so the, the state really, I guess they have it up there, the, the retention pond on the east side of the property. And I, I don't know our exact distance. I know it's, it's well over 300 feet from the railroad track, probably over 500. The, the state kind of, they, they need the noise analysis done, and they wanna make sure you're at least 300 feet from a railroad track, which, which we are here. And like, like we mentioned before, we can put up fencing if needed, we can, we can make sure that that's not a, not a concern.
So, and then the other thing is more of a comment. You know, we've had, since I've been on the Planning Commission, we've had two other planned unit developments that have been approved. One of them was on Water Street and River Street, and then the other one was at where the senior center is, on Monroe Conages. And both of those are closer to the downtown, yet neither of those projects were able to get the MISTDA funding.
It's--
So I'm wondering what magic, you know, secret sauce that you have that would put you in a, in a difficult situation, because there is a, a oil well, you have a railroad track, which the other, one property did and the other one didn't, and yet you're still further away from the pharmacy, you don't have those scores, and then the downtown.
Another concern I've got is right across the tracks is the Barrow-Wana district.
No, there you go. Who thought of that?
Yeah, so--
So I'm just curious about, about, but what's-- No, no, no. So anyways, that was, that was kind of, you know, more of a, you know, just figuring out, you know, in my mind, how it is that, that you believe that this is gonna be more advantageous to MISTDA than the last two projects that we have approved?
Yeah, there, there's a number of factors that, it's not just walk score that goes into the, the scoring. And we got Century Terrace and Harborview approved, so Commonwealth, we, we don't pursue a project. It is a very competitive program. There's no guarantee we'll get the funds. But one thing that we, we do have going for us is the state is really pushing for conversions from public housing to Lytec for the reasons we mentioned, additional funding, the, the being able to, you know, bring in private financing, and that's, that's additional points, the, the public housing conversions, which is one of the reasons why this would score, score better than those other projects that were submitted.
Doug Parks, I'm a member of the Housing Commission. Just to point out the Water Street project, I heard, I met with, well, I'll tell you, Tom Amor, the other day, I was talking to Tom and asking what was going on with the project. He mentioned one of the other property owners had backed out of doing the deal, and they lost five points off their score. And five points on a, what's a winning score, around 125 to 130?
One point will make the difference. It's--
And they lost five points when one property owner backed out, and that's what kind of tamed that deal.
Developing that monitor you're talking about?
Yeah. And that's, that's a topic only that, if another property owner backed out, they'll just--
Really?
So, yeah, five points, you're losing five percent--
Yeah.
Of your score, which, you know, one or two, John said, one or two points, and there'll be a whole bunch of 125 and only a few at the 130 level. It makes a lot. So I just wanted to let you know--
Thank you for that. I ask a question to the Housing Commission gentleman. What, what, or who, I should say, then, might manage the houses at Ritz Park? Because like you wouldn't have garbage bags on a porch. Who is in charge of something like that? Is there anybody in the city or--
No, we're, we're in charge of that, and we do cite the residents. But during the times of pandemic, it's been very difficult to enforce anything because our local courts have interpreted no eviction-- for non-payment-- no eviction, period. And so even though we take cases and throw them to the courts--
Right.
They stalemate forever in the court system, and Bigalay comes in and, you know, uses the pandemic and stuff. So we cite people, we inform the people about what has to be done in breaking their lease, and, you know--
But as time goes on with the pandemic, everybody's using that as an excuse. It'll get better, I assume.
Wasn't that solved at the Supreme Court?
Please hold your applause.
Hold your applause, please.
Mark, wasn't that solved at the Supreme Court, though? They ruled that evictions are allowed to continue now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, it has come through, and we just received something from the Secretary of HUD informing us. And actually, during the pandemic, when there was no eviction for non-payment, we were allowed by HUD to evict people for violation of their lease. The local courts would not allow any evictions--
Would not continue.
Right, and that, that ruling just came down last week, so, you know, it does take time to move through these processes, but I did wanna make everyone aware that that was the rule.
Well, we didn't realize it was a problem, but as long as you're gonna look into and take care of it, I assume.
Yes, we have several that we--
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Pam?
Yeah, I have, I have several questions. As a developer, how long have you been working with the housing authority on this project?
On this project? We've been looking for potential sites for about, I mean, since we got engaged with Century Terrace and Harborview, we knew that we wanted to make a plan for the, the rest of the units, so that's been for a couple of years now. We identified this site probably five, six months ago.
And I have, I have a couple of issues. Have you done a traffic study about the--
We didn't complete a traffic study. No, we haven't yet.
You haven't yet?
Nope.
Because that's a very congested corner. I've been close to having accidents there multiple times already this summer.
Especially when the kids are playing soccer.
Yeah, especially when the kids are playing soccer. Speaking of children, why is there no player area in this development?
We, so this, this, we would, that is something we would like to look into. We don't have it currently in the plans, but that's certainly something that we can, we can add.
And I don't know who considered this a walkable area, because I'm a walker and I wouldn't do it, especially if I had children with me and I had to go downtown for something. There's, there's no way. It's, it's just, it's just too far. Were you aware that there's a possible row facility going in across this, pretty much across the railroad tracks from where this is going?
I was not.
Okay, because that has been approved by the, the commission here, that they could start doing that. I don't know if they've started or not, but I know that we approved it. Why is there only one outlet in and out of the, the, the-- compound, I'm sorry-- development? You've got one entrance only--
Yeah, it's, you know, could maybe talk to that a little bit more, but for a development of this size, that's sufficient generally, yeah.
Well, you wouldn't--
Sufficient?
Your fire department wouldn't ask for more than one for--
We have a, we have a turnaround within there for the fire department.
How'd they get to the south side of the buildings?
Bruce Colain with Clean Engineering out of Spring Lake. So we've been working with the city, planning and engineering to implement this plan. The driveways align with the, with the opposing driveway to reduce conflicts there, but we've been working with the fire department. The, the interior lanes are sized width and, and distance so that we can, we can get good circulation with the fire truck. So that's how we designed the parking lot. So we looked at possibly another one, but it just didn't, the, the, the number of residents didn't really justify another entire drive, especially since we don't own all of the properties. So, yeah, we just haven't, we haven't done a traffic study.
And I think we would be happy to, to make an approval conditional on a traffic study, satisfactory traffic study.
I've been involved in the fire department for many years, and I see a major, but the fire department may have the room to get in there, but in the case of an evacuation, you have a major bottleneck. There's, once the fire trucks are in there, those other cars aren't coming up for people to evacuate. There's gotta be something looked at for that. up for people to evacuate. There's got to be something looked at for that.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Yeah, we've been working, we've been working with the city on all of the departments, I would assume. So-
Oh, maybe when you get the results and come back and then let us know just what the results are, as long as you're still working. That sounds like a good idea as far as I'm concerned, as long as you're still working.
Now, you mentioned earlier something about the distance from the tracks. What'd you say it was?
Well, each of those individual lots there are 60 foot wide.
They're 60 foot.
So you can-
Because I'm a surveyor, so I know that the first building is just barely 300 feet from the railroad right away.
Well, no, there's three, four, five, six, seven.
No. The first building is 300 feet from the railroad right away, not the tracks, or the driveway. I mean, there's 300 feet, the 300 feet to the driveway. From the parking lot to the first railroad right away is 300 feet.
From the parking lot?
Yes. And the building is not another 100, it's only maybe about another 60 feet by the lot size. So you're talking plus the 400 feet to the railroad right away.
On the north, on the residence-
Yes.
-will be about three, four, five, six, seven times 60, about 420 feet. On the south one, it'll be three, four, five, six, seven, about 400.
Yeah.
I'm an engineer.
I'm a surveyor for 48 years. I deal with this every day of my life. So, looking at this and knowing the subdivision there, I know the distances pretty well. So, that's my, that is my concerns there, the distance.
There is a huge, you can't see the grades, but there's quite a grave difference between the tracks. Both the tracks are lower, but then there's a huge mountain. You can see where the fence surrounding, or surrounding the retention is because we're working with grades, that grade goes really high to the east of the retention pond. So you can see that's all, you've got to work to climb that hill.
It's got kid magnet all over. I grew up close to railroad tracks, and so I, no, you know, kids are, it's way too close.
Curious.
It's just too tempting, you know. And plus the noise and the vibration factor. Even, I mean, I grew up like half a mile away and we could still feel it on my house. You stated that there were going to be inspections. Who does the inspections and how often would they be done?
They are, HUD does REACT inspections there, I believe biannually unless they come up with any concerns, then they go down to annually. That's a little bit more.
Do you have any statistics on how long people live in these units generally?
Don't have them with me, but they can be generated.
Yeah, you could find out. Sure.
Yeah, I'd be curious if they're more temporary or transient, or if this is, where they live, forever.
Well, we don't really have a bunch of forever, so we have a lot of long time people. You know, I can think of several families, you know, who've been there, going on 16 years.
Is there an average age demographic? Is there an average age demographic?
These, yeah.
I think so. The smaller, the one and two veteran units, or the more the one unit, veteran units are more elderly, near elderly, 55 plus. Where then the larger units skew a little more towards small families.
We have 40% of the current scattered sites throughout the city that are residents who are 55 and older. That's near elderly and above. The next statistic is not related to that first one because it's doing something else. 50% of the residents are families with children. So you're going to have elderly, near elderly. I fall under that. And I have responsibility for a 16-year-old in my household. So, and that happens. And so 50% of our current residents have children in their household.
And you have an area developed in here for children, I assume, somewhere, right?
Not in the plans, but like I said, we would like to-
Oh, they're working on it. Okay.
Have a playground.
Something else to work on. Okay.
I apologize, Pam. Were you?
No, it's all right. I did-
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Or whatever.
Currently, I don't believe the bus system serves that area. Have you approached them about being willing to go out and serve that area?
We will approach.
But you haven't- We haven't talked to them yet.
They are very good at servicing those that live in our current public housing, which includes our current Vine Street. And so we're good at switching that line.
Yeah. And again, as we kind of mentioned before, this, we still need to get the tax credits, which is a very competitive process. So there still is a lot that, you know, needs to be completed.
Oh, okay.
I have a few questions, so if everyone-
Yep.
Raj? Go ahead. Thank you. And I'm going to ask this question because I don't know the answer. Can this project be moved outside the city?
No. For the funding reasons, it has to be located within that walk score area.
That's the other part of that question. Walkability of this? I mean, you are at the far northern end of the city. Okay? Vine Street, you have a couple, you have stores, restaurants-
Pharmacy.
Pharmacy right around the corner, a few blocks away. This seems way outside the norm for walkability scores.
Yeah.
Tell us about the walkability scores.
No, like I said, it's an arbitrary score the state has where it's walkscore.com and they, you put in the address and it pumps out what the walk score is. And so it's, that's purely for points. We're not saying that, you know, this is necessarily the best, most walkable right downtown location. But you are still, yeah, like was mentioned, we plan on talking to the bus service to get the bus route there that'll help residents move. But, yeah, you're within less than, I would say maybe a half mile to downtown. I have to run that.
Probably a little more.
I'd like to go back one question though, Mark, about, you know, the location and why it's not outside of the city and stuff. These properties are public housing under a contract established between the City of Manchester, which created the City of Manchester Housing Commission, and the federal government under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And under their RAD conversion program, we have to stay within the boundaries of the original contract.
That's fair. All right, thank you. On the west side of the development, you have one driveway. And it was mentioned that it is aligned with what driveway?
The one I mean, opposing.
DPW, I believe.
Okay. And, okay, so with that-
Very walkable.
In the-
That's right.
Special use district, marijuana district, driveways are taken out or will be taken out because you don't want driveways across from one another. Causes issues. Why would this be directly across the street?
Usually the issue is if they're not directly across.
Yeah, he's correct. That's, you want them directly across from each other.
I thought we took them out because of that, because we had-
No, we took curb cuts out because the M.D.A. requested that as a development happens on Arthur Street, that some curb cuts are closed.
Yeah, closed, yeah.
Fair enough.
They want to get off the street.
On your screen is also the methodology of how they come up with the walk scores and what will garner a high walk score.
Okay. In this area where this proposed development is, there's not one grow facility, but there's possibility of two, two facilities, which is concerning.
Mark, that, if you're referring to the one on Glatchewski, that permit has been signed and they're ready to move forward on that one as well. So there's going to be, there is going to be two.
So two facilities. Man, was anybody aware of those?
We were not. But I think as we talked about before, the kind of the east side of this property is, one, if we're going to put in a fence for the railroad, and two, if we have the big retention pond, it's not going to be attractive to kind of go to the east and cross over the railroad tracks and-
Well, this is to the west.
Oh, to the west.
To the west. One is in the industrial.
Where is the one going on?
It's down by Dunes Drive. And I would caution just the commissioners that not let that weigh on your decision. It's essentially a liquor store at this point. So be careful and tread lightly on that.
And it's not a provisioning center on Glatchewski. It's purely a grill operation. Nothing will be sold there.
Currently, the city just invested this past year in a storage facility, which is going to be right around the corner from this proposed facility.
It's already there.
It's right next to it.
Well, right. So along with the railway, this could cause some issues. Not saying that the residents of this facility would get into this. I'm just saying that the city has invested a lot of money in this storage facility.
Yeah.
Anything happen there?
Why would you assume that something would happen?
Can. It could.
Why would you make that assumption, though?
It could happen. Anything can happen.
Anything could, right.
Yeah. So I'm saying it could happen.
With any project there?
It can happen.
It could.
Mark, we have a couple of questions as well. If one of you guys have a free minute.
Okay, well, I have a few more. So, again, a lot of the commissioners hit upon traffic. With this proposed development, there's going to be a lot of traffic here. You have fab light, you have industry in this area, a lot of traffic during the day, a lot of truck traffic in and out of Dr. Shrink. That goes on all day, semis. To me, it's a dangerous point for the residents of this facility and the people that work in the industry. My opinion. Maintenance of the building, where's the maintenance going to come from?
Give out the funds for the maintenance?
Who's going to take care of the maintenance?
The Housing Commission will be operating the properties. And there'll be new properties fully funded, unlike the current underfunded, non-funded properties that we have.
Yeah, so the LITC program, or it works where, one, you have a replacement reserve that you're required to fund to replace and repair. And two, it's, you have to show that that's going to be sufficient with a needs assessment through at least 15 years, at which point you can get more tax credits to rehab as needed. That's where that comes from.
Well, for maintenance of what we have today in the City Housing Commission, I'm not impressed.
Mark, you understand we are underfunded. Public housing nationally is underfunded by over $55 billion. We have not, it took us almost four years to save up money to repair elevators at Harborview. We have one source of funding right now. That is the federal government. We have not received sufficient funding to maintain the properties. So much though, that when REACT has come through, they've turned a blind eye because there's no funding available to fix things.
And this project would be funded differently?
Yes.
Yep, yep. So the-
Taken out of public housing completely.
Yeah. The state, the government is pushing to convert these from public housing into light, low income housing tax credit programs, which are privately funded. They have-
Partnerships.
They're, yeah, there's more funds. You have the replacement reserves, you have, because public housing is underfunded. And obviously, we know that that causes issues with the projects.
And last, the property on Vine Street, if the tenants are moved, if this is approved, they move into this facility, what happens to that property?
The day that the financing is signed and all tenants are subsequently moved in 2023 into the new project, it no, once the last tenant has been successfully moved to the new project, federal government no longer owns those properties, turns them over to the Housing Commission commissioners. At that point, and prior to that, we'll be working on it. But at that point then, we have the ability to dispose of those properties, redevelop those properties differently, sell them differently. There's a lot of options we haven't begun exploring. But at this moment, we have no control over those properties. We won't have it. And we know for sure, we have the funding to get out of there. And then we're going to move all the residents out. And then we can dispose of those unsightly properties.
Yep. And, yeah, like Clint mentioned, once they're no longer public housing, we can do what we want. And we've mentioned that, you know, ensuring that a condition is, ensuring that any blight is removed, and either redeveloping or demolishing and selling those properties for redevelopment. And those, they'll go back on the tax rolls at that point as well. And it's, there'll be opportunities for redevelopment.
And the money from the sale goes-
To the Housing-
Housing Commission, I assume.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Thank you.
You mentioned moving the residents from like Vine Street to there. Have you asked any of the residents if they would be interested in moving to that area of town? Because, I mean, that's away from schools, it's away from stores that they're used to being close to. Have you actually asked, sent a questionnaire if they're doing, interested or not?
We've had meetings.
Yeah.
And they're excited about getting out of those homes and into a new place.
So it's, Roger, it's not a choice for them? They would pretty much have to-
It is a choice. It is a choice. But if they choose not to move, then they won't have their Section 8 voucher, which subsidizes the rent for them, essentially.
Probably not much of a choice.
Then they're going to go someplace else.
They're guaranteed not to have to pay any more rent than they're currently paying in public housing when they move over to the new place.
Really?
They have some protections under public housing that are continued over.
For how?
What?
For how long?
As long as they live in the unit that are there.
We're committing to, we would commit to 45 years of affordability in the property. And, yeah, these, like Clint said, we held a resident meeting, very supportive. Everyone knows that, you know, the existing units that they're living in need work. And these are going to be nice new apartments with washers and dryers, a clubhouse building. It's, yeah, very nice.
Is there any wiggle room at all as far as the design of the buildings are concerned? Because, I mean, right now it looks like dormitory housing at a university. I mean, you may consider them attractive, but I don't. And-
Yep. There is some wiggle room there, but it's, it has to look at kind of how the funding balances out. I think we would consider balconies potentially. But, yeah, there is some flexibility there. But, yeah.
I just had one because I don't, I don't live on this end of town. I don't often have the opportunity to go down Quincy. Aren't there, aren't half of the lots on Quincy in the same proximity to the railroad tracks as some of these areas?
Some of them are at the very, at the end of Quincy.
East end.
At the very east end of Quincy they are.
Okay. So they sort of follow the same line in proximity then?
Sort of, yeah.
Sort of, okay. My other question, sorry, I just had one more. You said 40% of your current residents are 55 and older, which obviously not generally the time of their life when they're going to start growing their income. I know we had a couple of projects come in front of us that were primarily 55 and older. Are those the projects that have been mentioned that are now off the table? So there still is, is there any senior housing or potential senior housing projects in the works right now in the city? So there still is, is there any senior housing or potential senior housing projects in the works right now in the city?
I mean, there's, the ones over by the church and stuff like that, I don't think those are completely dead yet, but outlook's not good. So, I mean, you guys have granted your portion of it, they have to get the score, and, I mean, that's out of our hands. So we occasionally, you know, check in on them and see if they were able to get funding for it, and so far the answer is no. The Water Street project, again, the property there, that I believe is now the ice cream shop, was pulled out of that, and they were not able to get that score. But, you know, maybe they can modify their plan and come back through and amend it and come back before you and resubmit, but as of right now, no, there are not.
Thank you.
The income. Is that for those who are current residents in the Housing Commission properties, that will have no effect on them moving into the new facilities at Lake Winds because they are guaranteed transfer. HUD makes up the difference between.
I understood that.
Okay, great.
Oh, a question I had is, GHO. One thing, when you develop this building, the Housing Commission is going to be in charge of managing it, as I understand, then, correct?
We're gonna, so Commonwealth has a management company as well, and we're going to co-manage it for a period of time, at least 15 years.
Oh, that's what I wanted to ask. Now, you're asking us for what, do you have permits from the state for this funding for this, a project?
No, we do not. So this is part of.
So if we.
The application with approval or site plan approval is one of the spring items that we're talking.
If we approve it tonight and you send it in, you could still get denied, and this project wouldn't happen just like the other three, correct?
Yep.
Yeah. All right.
Bob, question?
I was just going through their walkscore.com that they gave me, and it shows me a walkability score of 40, and it says, "Most errands require a car." To me, that still seems like it's a very low walkability number.
Mishda, they, you get the score if you're within a third of a mile of the high walk score, so.
Okay, because it's showing me the nearest thing is six tenths of a mile away, the nearest grocery store at least.
Well, I mean, yeah, you go on different sites, it'll tell you different numbers, but, yeah, you can find all this.
What he just said was that if you're within a third of a mile of a high walkability score, you get that score. So think of like Northside Bakery.
I was, I looked at for the US, Save-A-Lot compared to it, and it still said requires a car, would require a car, so about six tenths of a mile.
No, no, I understand that, but if you put in like the Northside Bakery address or one of there, they get that score. It's within a third of a mile of the property, so that's what he just said, was that's how he's able to secure that higher score.
Higher scored than 40?
Yes.
Mike, I got a question.
Yeah.
Isn't, isn't there a road that goes?
There's a platted road to the south.
A platted road? Okay. So, was there any thought of that, that platted road being an access point or a secondary access point to the property?
Or emergency point even, you know, for safety. You don't have to use it.
That'd be Monroe Street, is that the Platted Street? I couldn't.
No. It would be Madison.
It's Madison, yeah.
Madison, that would be, right, right, right.
So we did have a couple of questions, Mark, if we can.
Yes, go ahead.
So we just wanted clarification. Century Terrace and Harborview, you guys aren't expanding those out or up or changing your footprint in any way, correct?
Nope.
Okay. If you did, it would have to come back before this commission for a special use permit, and I just wanted to put that on record, so.
Understood.
What's the lifespan of this building?
These new buildings? Good question, do you know? I mean, it's obviously built to, built to whatever Michigan code and higher code with our green standards that we're going after. But, like I said, every 15 years, we usually have new funds come in to rehab and complete kind of necessary upgrades at that point.
So, but like 40 years would be sufficient? Yeah, yeah, okay. Are you guys looking for approval tonight?
Yes, so we're looking for at least a conditional approval that can be approved, for the further, it can be approved at a staff level. So, yeah.
What happens if you don't get approval tonight?
If we don't get approval in September, then we, we're, we don't have those points for our application, and it'll be likely, likely won't move forward. This, it's, yeah.
There's deadlines, I assume.
Yep, so the October 1 deadline, and like we said, it's, if you don't get those points, it's highly competitive, and this, and it's, they're, like, become a reality.
And in the future, like, I know these things happen quickly. Typically with the PUD, they like to digest it, and not come in the meeting of and request approval, especially if you're requiring stipulations on it, or they would like to see alternative site plans. So we just ask for that courtesy in the future. Also, the, you know, we talked about alternative site plans. Is there the ability to lessen these, these buildings? Like, is, do you have to have that many units? Is there, can you change the units?
We could potentially do less units, yes, but at this point, for this application where it stands, we don't have.
I mean, I've looked this over, and we looked it over in-house a little bit, and we agree with Pam, it kind of looks more of like a, you know, you'd go to your college and, you know, it's, it is more like that, there's not a, it's not very community-based. I think that if, you know, we have an example from, you know, Mount Pleasant where they put in some townhomes, and the community that, you know, go ahead, and how it looks like a neighborhood. You know, these are something that's going to be here for 40 years.
Yeah.
We're looking at, you know, something that, hey, faces a street, like, you know, there might be an alleyway, backway where there's, they park on. But it, that looks walkable right there. You, you know, I think that, you know, when you're looking at stuff, you, you know, especially with these, these housing projects coming in, it's important to sit there and say, like, you know, I realize there, you know, for, and, I mean, the garages, we understand that that might not be a reality, but, you know, sitting on this porch and looking out in the, in the, in the area, you know, if I'm a lower-income person, this is somewhere I want to be. It has a grass area, I mean, like, I would personally like to see an expansion of maybe like five or 10 feet on that grass area to give my front yard. But just because low income or, you know, affordable housing is, is for, you know, lower-income people, doesn't mean it shouldn't be livable, and.
Absolutely, and, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, really, when I see something like this, I'm like, you know, if this project came forward, I'd be beating down the hatches to get it, you know, like, and, you know, there's certain things within there that, you know, we like to see, like, you know, place that's, community areas, you know, a feeling of place. And so like, this is a, you know, big thing we're trying to create in Manastee, you know, a place you want to live and work. You know, even for, you know, the lower-income people, just because you're low-income doesn't mean you don't deserve a great place. I think that a community place is, is a place we're looking for, and I think, like, when a lot of people looked at the plan, they seen some boxes, and no community, there's parking lot, but, and we, and we realize that we need a parking lot here, but there's just other designs that we would like to look at when these projects come forward and just say, hey, you know, this is something that, you know, really fits our community and what we're trying to do in making it a place. And I just, me personally, as a planner, and I think within our office, we feel that, while the plan is great for affordable housing, it's not really accomplishing that. And, you know, as, as projects come in, we want to see that. So this plan came in kind of quickly, and I realized that you guys were on a deadline. You know, this might have been a recommendation I made, but, you know, it did come in rather quick. You know, it's on the commission tonight to do whatever they want, but in the future, you know, we're really trying to make a place here. And I think if you came in with something like that, that's a project that I wouldn't have a problem living next to. It feels like a place, it's a walkable community, you know, something that I can go walk down and enjoy, wave to my neighbor on their porch or whatever. It shouldn't be a place that I get out of my car and I walk in and I lock myself in my door, you know, like, and that's, that's kind of the way that that other project feels like. There's no bump outs besides small porches, there's no livable area for them to work or play in. And it, you know, I would just like to see maybe less density as well.
How is, how are those accessible?
Well, I mean, you could, you could install accessibility ramps on them. I mean, there is point on the corner ones to install those.
So I guess, you know, one, the rendering is, it's a rendering, it's preliminary, it's not, not what it looks like. And we have some examples on our website, if you pull up, like Surfview Village in Oregon, for example, is a good comparison.
Okay.
Surfview?
Surfview, yep.
And that, you know, like, they, they're getting this really tonight, it's really hard to make that, you know, without, you know, hey, guys, this is what it's going to look like. Rendering is a rendering, we realize that, but like, you know, picture speak volumes. And you're like, hey, this is really what it's going to look like, you know, it's a place of point, you know, like, this is what your lighting looks like. Like, right now we have landscaping will meet ordinance, it's difficult to sit there and say, yeah, go for it. You know, from our aspect, when we're, you know, and believe me, I know we need housing. We desperately need it. And so, but, you know, at times I just have to kind of look at it and say, you know, is it a community place? And that's what I feel like's lacking from that plan.
Yeah, and from, from this, yeah, it's hard to really visualize it from, from a site plan, we understand that. And like you know, we were on the tight timelines in order to, because this funding is, is a limited resource, it's.
You say October 1 is your deadline?
Yeah.
So if we were to throw you out with all these things that we asked about tonight, could we possibly have a meeting in this month?
You could call a special meeting for it, yes.
I mean, so they could meet, I don't know.
And this is, this is the, what he, he had said it looked like right there, guys, on the right of your screen?
This is.
Yeah.
That's a three-story, obviously, this is less.
I like what Mike was showing.
Yeah, to me, this, this mock-up is sterile. I would like.
I think institutional housing is that kind of.
I would like to see the Mount Pleasant-style housing. I think the neighborhood, neighborhood, excuse me, would appreciate something like that.
No, I think they would.
Do, give them a little treat over there.
And there's, yeah, like, it's very, yeah, there isn't necessarily funding for that.
Yeah.
So this is, this is kind of a, you know, an opportunity to, to fix kind of the blighted Housing Commission properties, convert the public housing, and it's an opportunity that's, that might not come around quickly before or in the near future, which means the existing properties are going to be still sitting there.
And in use.
And.
We'd like to make the best development that we can for the property if we're going to develop it, and like I say, and I'm sure you probably can't do what Mike was showing, but like you say, I mean, that, to me, that's like an institution. You know, you come home from work and that's what I'm going to look at? Compared to a porch and a step and a tree, I don't know, if this is high-quality, affordable workforce, I mean, is that what you call high quality? Okay.
Yep, we have, we have mark, we have to complete market studies. Our top rents are going to be, you know, in there with the market rents, and we have to prove that it's desirable, and people like living in denser communities with, obviously, we have the big clubhouse there. And we're talking about, we could add a playground there, it's, we're surrounded by a wooded area, plenty of, you know, green space, wooded area kind of surrounding the property itself. Yeah, it's, I would disagree that it's institutional or, or not.
Can you speak a little bit more to what you were talking about just now? So the little, the domino effect of the existing properties, if this project, again, I understand COVID dollars and the rest of it, having to put a lot of these projects together very quickly, or risk losing funding, however. I also understand the need for it versus not in my backyard. Well, we, most of us already have it in our backyard here. So what happens to the existing properties which are held under different funding? And are you saying that they don't receive new funding if this one doesn't happen?
We continue to receive the level of funding that we have received, which is not anywhere sufficient to do repairs.
But I thought you said that those sales have already been made?
Nope, so we, this project has to move forward, there has to be a place for those, that subsidy to go to in order for those properties to then be disposed of.
You're talking the Vine Street?
The Vine Street, yeah.
But the other two are already in process?
Century Terrace, Harborview.
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's a separate, that's going through the conversion.
This is incremental housing. New, new, more units.
16 of the units will be new. It is new, but the 48 existing scattered site units will likely be disposed of or redeveloped, so.
Are you talking about the 12th Street units also?
Yes.
You never brought that up before yet. You just talked Vine Street all the time. We got 12th Street units also, and I can't remember what the other one.
12th, 10th.
10th, Concord. I can read to you the addresses so you're aware where these units are located. 1699 Vine Street, built 1969. 1701 Vine Street, built 1969. 1703 Vine Street, rebuilt 2010 under ARA. 1703 and a half Vine Street, rebuilt under ARA 2010. 1707 Vine Street, rebuilt under ARA 2010. 1707 and a half Vine Street, 2010 rebuilt under ARA. 1709 Vine Street, 1969. 1711 Vine Street, 1969. 1715 Vine Street, 1969. 1717 Vine Street, 1969. 1719 and a half Vine Street, 1969. 100 Park, 1969. 100 and a half Park, 1969. 102 Park Avenue, 1969. 102 and 1/2 Park, 1969. 104 Park Avenue, 1969. 104 and 1/2 Park Avenue, 1969. 106 Park Avenue, 1969. 106 and 1/2 Park Avenue, 1969. 108 Park Avenue, 1969. 110 Park Avenue, 1984. 110 1/2 Park Avenue, 1984. 100 Holly, 1969. 101 Holly, 1969. 101 and 1/2 Holly Court, 1969. 102 Holly Court, 1969. 103 Holly Court, 1969. 104 Holly Court, 1969. 105 Holly Court, 1969. 106 Holly Court, 1969. 108 Holly Court, 1969. 112 Holly Court is a laundry unit, it was built in 1969. 112 and 1/2 Holly Court, 1969. 312 Street, 1969. 302, 302 12th Street, 1969. 302 and 1/2, 1969. 304 12th Street, 1969. 306 12th Street, 1969. 306 and 1/2 12th Street, 1969. 1204 Cypress Street, 1969. 1204 and 1/2 Cypress, 1969. 327 Sixth Street, 1984. 327 and 1/2 Sixth Street, 1984. 343 Street, 1984. 343 and 1/2 10th, 1984. 138 Jefferson Street, 1984. 343 and a half 10th, 1984. 138 Jefferson Street, 1984. 1015 Concord Street, 1984.
So I have a quick question here. Is, is, as it stands now for you guys, is, is it, would it be fair to say at this building's life cycle, call it forty, forty-five years ballpark? Are we in the same situation where we're just playing leapfrog?
As far as, no, so as I mentioned, every fifteen years, you can go out and seek new tax credits to, to rehab, bring the building back up to.
And that's a total rehab?
I, it's, so similar to Century Terrace Harbor View, I think we were at about, you know, sixty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars a unit.
Is it safe to say that the inside of the apartments will look like these Surfview ones?
Yeah.
Okay.
Very similar.
I mean, it's very attractive. I'm not going to say it's not, it's, it's, it's a very attractive unit.
Follow up on your question. These units by HUD, very disrevided. They have no expenses. We're not allowed to finance them anyway, other than this program.
Okay, thank you.
We have no way of doing anything.
All of the 1969 dates you gave, that's when they were originally built?
And they're all modular homes. Except for the two, the two buildings which are duplexes on Vine, built by ARA. Those are stick builds.
And I assume there's regular maintenance?
There is regular maintenance along with what was, that we can do based on the funding provided. We go through probably about half a dozen or more furnaces every winter. Probably about a dozen water heaters going out. And we've, we've replaced all the roofs since I've been here twice. And it's just because, you know, you're, you're putting stuff on bad, a building. And the buildings were sinking. And we had to have an engineer come through and design each building that's over a crossface, how to put in a support beam and where to put the jacks. We did that for each and every one of those homes, except for the two buildings that were recently built by ARA.
Yeah, absolutely.
And how many total units are there right now?
Forty-eight units, thirty-five buildings.
So you have quite a few duplexes.
Yes, we have thirteen duplexes, twenty-two single families. Of that total I read to you, there's twenty-one bedrooms, nine two bedrooms, ten three bedrooms, and nine four bedrooms.
The ones that were redone in the two thousands, how many of those were there and what type of buildings were they?
I'm sorry, can you?
The buildings you mentioned that were into two thousand, two thousand years, how many were there of those?
There's two buildings that were replaced.
Okay.
And we were, we put two buildings up and made them into duplex, two-bedroom duplexes that meet our weightless need for families with children. And they were built with funds, you know, American Recovery Act.
So that's a total of four units on those buildings combined?
Right. I should also add, we built those after we had invested over thirty thousand dollars in trying to repair one unit which was left with dead animals in the, in the building.
So are animals are, will be, will animals be allowed in this new development?
They're required by Fair Housing that apartment complexes need to be pet friendly.
With restrictions or no restrictions?
There are some restrictions that can be put in.
You can have a fee for, for pets and, and limit the number of.
Like a pet deposit like you would normally?
What?
Like a pet deposit, you would normally pay it?
Yep, as, yeah, and you can limit, limit the number. I, I think it's maybe one or two. I, I have to double check that.
How's that going to be enforced?
They have to register their pets currently. And we take a picture of the animal and they have to provide us all the veterinary information. Do they always do that? No, but we usually find out. And then we go after them and have to remove those. However, when is a pet not a pet? Service animal, which is only a dog, or an assistance animal. You can only have one service animal, but you can have more than one assistance animal.
I think somebody asked this, and I apologize if you've already answered it, but it's unclear to me. Who in the city of Manasty, or maybe it's not within the city, I've heard several people voice concerns about the appearance of the outside blight garbage piling up, that kind of thing. Was the Housing Commission responsible for enforcing some sort of code, or is the city or the county?
There is a blight ordinance in the city enforced by the city police, and I do what I can when I see it. I'm not on the ground at all times. As far as additional restrictions by them, that is reasonable. I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know if you guys have them. That is a stipulation you guys could require.
We have restrictions. They can't have their porches crowded. They can't have trash on it. But until recently, we couldn't really do anything about it, other than send letters and say, you need to remove it.
Is there any stipulations you guys can put in there to that, like you can actively come in and remove it? And then, is there anything along that line, those lines? So like, you know, if, if they're physically unable to, or they, they, you know, they're hoarding, or are you guys allowed to move in and, and take that stuff out there?
If a person requests assistance on that, under a reasonable accommodation, yes. If they're, if they're trash. We can't just do it because of Michigan tenant law. Hoarding is a mental health issue. It's a very long time. We addressed several of them in my tenure here. But it's a mental health issue, which is a different ballgame. A lot of work on that.
Do you do, folks do health and safety checks at all on any of these buildings?
Health and safety is performed by the police department. We are not allowed to enter a person's unit unless they give us permission to enter their unit.
Okay, but as renters, and you're the landlord?
Yeah.
Why are you not allowed to give them notice to come look?
We can't. Forty-eight hour written notice.
Okay, so that'd be the health and safety checks?
No, we can't do health and safety checks.
Which is you walking in the door and looking at it, see if the place is livable. That's a health and safety check.
There you go.
I would refer you to the city's attorney and the Housing Commission's attorney to address that concern because we have to follow his directions on the tenant, Michigan's tenant law, on how we enter a unit. Even after a person is deceased, we're in conjunction, in communication with George. So you determine that. There, there's, Michigan law is very strict.
Pets, how many pets can you have in, in, in a unit? One?
Pet, you can have one pet.
But he alluded to people committing fraud basically and having lots of assistance animals. That's the impression I got you were going with that?
And we require that assistance animals be a reasonable accommodation, which have to be approved by a third-party verifier, doctor, counselor, someone who knows the person very well and their health. They have to meet criteria of what defines a reasonable accommodation. The doctor or whoever, particularly is usually a doctor, has to sign the letter, state the reason, put his or her license number on there. Because upon audit, then I send them to the doctor's office.
But you go to five different doctors and give five different letters?
We don't take a letter from the doctor. They have to give us, the doctor has to provide on our form with their license number.
Okay.
What about a, since they're assistance animals, dog? Where are the residents supposed to walk their dog? Where are the dogs going to relieve themselves? I didn't see anything in, in this plan.
We could, there are sidewalks, but we could also potentially add a dog park or area for that.
Potentially, or add a dog park?
Add, add.
Two different things.
There's, there's quite a bit of green space in three different locations.
That's what I mean, Marco. Let them go and fix this all up and then come back. There's a lot of things that we're asking that he's going to do adding. You know, we can be here all night.
I'm not going to be here all night. Mark, we do supply the bags and the things for people to pick up with their animals. We put in several places throughout, we do in our other places. It all then comes down to individuals picking up after their dogs.
No. I live by some of your units on 10th Street. And I hear the dogs barking during the night. Which is a little disconcerting. I'd hate to have residents in the neighborhood of Quincy Street and on our side have this.
Do you call the police to file a complaint?
No, I don't.
I can't do anything until I have a legal complaint. I have to have a police complaint. And then that's a legal document that we can pursue eviction with. I can't do any of that. I don't have that authority. Police do.
Call.
Police also enforce picking up animal droppings. They enforce noise ordinances. All the other ordinances the city has adopted, the authority is invested in the police department.
Well, that's our problem. It's, it's not so much making the rules, it's the enforcing of the rules. And we've got it through neighborhoods and not only up there, you're not alone. But that's the problem, the enforcement. And hopefully that'll get better too, but that's beyond, that's bad. I'm sorry, Mark.
So what you're also saying is, if one of the Housing Commission buy, buy a place that sees it blighted, you have, have you been calling the police to report the blight? If you, as, as the commissioner and the housing technician, and you see it, are you reporting it? You're saying, is he calling about?
I don't need to call the police because I'm the executive director. I take a picture of it. And then I go back and tell my staff we're filing an eviction. That's all that's needed because I'm paid staff. I'm responsible for those properties.
Okay, but suppose somebody else on your Housing Commission sees it? Are they to call the police or to call you?
The Housing Commissioner can submit to me as the same thing as me, turning in for eviction.
What's the likelihood that you'll be able to take some of the considerations you're hearing and turn it around in the timeframe that you need? Every, every community has a need for this housing. And something that's brand new, you know, visibly a lot more attractive than, than many of the properties around town. With a need, there's, there's obviously a needs base here. What's the likelihood of a quick turnaround?
We can invite a very quick turnaround, depending on how expensive the, the requests are. I think a complete.
I don't think anything Mike brought up was unreasonable, something that's marred with.
Another thing is, we can, we can, we can submit with conditional approval, as long as those conditions are met and approved at the staff level. So that's, that's another option is, there can be conditions on the approval.
Well, I ask because it, you know, again, Mike brings up a good point of, you know, there, there may be a lot of the results that come about from the perception of low-income housing because it is so industrial looking. It is, you know, and you're, we're talking about building big walls and hiding people away and shoving them into, you know, little tiny places where you, there's one way in, one way out, which to me makes it dangerous. Lot of things, you know, can happen if it's hidden with one way in and one way out. I grew up in a, in much larger city with low-income housing that got a very bad rap to it. And the community rallied together and worked with their neighbors, because these people are already our neighbors. And set some community expectations, but if, if we can't understand that there is a need, these people are already here, this would be something I would hope that would beautify the area. And if some adjustments were made, it might be a much more acceptable, beautiful place to look at. This is one of those towns that, you know, people have lived here forever. It's very special. And.
I actually grew up in Onakama and went to Manasty High School, so.
Then you know. So would you want it in your backyard?
Yeah, yeah.
In its, in its current iteration? In its current iteration?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, there's a huge need and it's, it's, again, the site plan doesn't do it, or the, it doesn't do it justice as far as kind of the wooded surroundings.
Then help us see.
Any other questions?
Mark, we can re, read back kind of what we've gotten down and then you guys can work off of that from what the discussion has generally been. So we're seeing, they want to see something with fully staffed for the life of the building or the project. Fencing to keep the children off the tracks. Green space buffers along like the east and south side. A dog park or community space and playgrounds. We have, was that mentioned?
It was, I'm sure it was just.
Okay, and then potential options on facade and color of material. Other than that, that's, that's what we have. Anything else?
I would like to see the actual floor plan, because all, all we're seeing is a box. And, you know, how many entrances, you know, how many doors off of the single entrance into the house? You know, how are the, the hallways configured, just to get an idea of what that square would look like?
Yeah, it looks like, like a generic template.
Yeah, you guys also have some great pictures of like the Surfview Village, if that's what it's going to look like. Can we, can we get kind of like a walkthrough maybe?
Yeah.
If you guys have a video, like, that would be even better that we could play here and just get it to us. So like, you can kind of walk through it and see what it's going to look like. If you have grounds video, that's even better. Because then, you know, a, a rendering's a rendering. But if we can get like a visual, like of somebody walking it, I think that's even better.
Where's your closest development?
We, Grand Rapids is the closest one. We, we have, we're mostly out of state though. But yeah.
I mean, take a look at it. Did you want, Mark, weren't they talking about a traffic study?
Yeah, that was a, well, we didn't make it a stipulation, but yeah, a traffic study, if you guys could bring it in. Just showing what that traffic might look like. I know that, that timeline's going to be tight on a traffic study.
Traffic in the sound, if we could.
You guys could conditionally approve that on the next meeting. I would look at it, but as, if, if, if approval's given. That's going to be really tight. If they're looking to come back here, say in like a week or two and do that. So especially if they're trying to hit that October 1 deadline. Realistically, guys, what are you thinking about for, for like a timeline? Like, I realize that what, what we've given, but I know how long a traffic study takes, so.
I, yeah, I think it would be tough to get a traffic study done in time. Especially with how busy everybody.
Okay, well, let's start from the beginning. How come we're all pressed for time? Where have you been for the last year?
It's the COVID money.
Where have you been for the last year?
The timing of, of getting the site, finding the site and, and getting everything lined up.
It took a year to get to this point?
No, I, I said six months. In, in the state, it just, three or four months ago came out with what the funding allocation, how it's going to be allocated, so.
So then why weren't you here three or four months ago?
Uh, because we, we got the site identified and under contract. Just.
That's what I, yeah, okay. You've been working on it for a year. Three or four months ago, you.
I haven't been working on this deck project.
I mean, you know, you get it and bring it in tonight. You want it approved because you got a deadline for three weeks. All right, whatever. I'm sorry, Mark.
It's, it's hard to take all this in, in this amount of time.
Right.
Basically dropping the bomb on us. Basically dropping the bomb on us. There's a lot of things to go through. If it's approved, it's approved tonight. If it's denied, it's denied. Don't know. We haven't gone to that step.
Well, another thing, I mean, is this like the wife, is because it's on sale? So, are you telling me this is the last chance for this funding? It'll never happen again?
It'll, so it could, it's twice a year, they offer it.
Okay.
The scoring changes, and it gets more, typically more competitive as you go. So, there's certainly one, no guarantee we would be able to keep the site under control and with the sellers. And two, that it would still be competitive at that point, so it's-
But it's not forever. It's going to happen again.
There's an option to table it as well. So, you guys could move out of the public hearing, go into discussion and motion the table, and then table until a timeline that they could make the changes and re-present.
And that would be under new business, correct?
Yes. Once you close it, that motion would have to take place under new business. That's why I'm, I'm trying to get a reasonable timeline for them to come back before you. So, if that is the option, you could table at that point.
Right, okay.
Yeah, as far as reasonable timeline, I, yeah, I think a couple of weeks. Except for any third-party studies, like a traffic study, we're, it's going to happen.
Like, so if they close the public hearing, you guys, the fifteen-day notice isn't, isn't a requirement at that point, because you're making it known in this, when you would do that, if you were to table it. And then, as long as it's over that forty-eight-hour period, then you could just call that meeting and then make your decision at that time after a re-presentation. So, with, with them needing two weeks, that, that puts them really tight, because if you guys find anything wrong on it, then, you know, they'll ask you to make those corrections. There could be conditional, it could not be. But if they're just unhappy, then the chances of getting it through another time are being very slim, guys. So, I'm just, do you, do you, is two weeks the, the maximum amount you want to take? Or do you want to scale it back a little bit?
I mean, if it's just, yeah, if there aren't third-party studies, I think, I think we could scale that back. In the, in the two weeks, are, are you saying that's when we're coming back here, or when you-
Yeah, it would be, it'd be coming back in front of them.
When would you need these updates prior to that?
At least a week. We'd like them, that's typically how we do it. So, I mean, five days at the lowest, and then, because we like to let the public be able to review it by putting them online. Which is obviously not a requirement, but it's just in, in this community, that's how we operate, so.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, given, given the holiday, if, if we can complete the updates in a week and then provide them to you and then have the-
Okay, so about two weeks. And then, if we see anything glaring, you know, we'll, we'll address it quickly and then call the meeting in, in two weeks' time. If, if you table, then that's your decision.
If we table, okay.
Yeah, and you're, you've got, given them all the, what we've talked about so far, right?
I'll get you guys to the list that we have written down. I saw you jotting it down, but I can get it to you.
Wrap up. On the public hearing, is there any other questions by the commission?
No.
No.
No? Okay. And we will close public hearing.
There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Public comments on agenda-related items? We just did that.
Is that?
Okay, never mind.
You can, yeah, you, you did it in the public hearing, you did comments. This is on agenda-related items.
New business?
New business. We're, we're okay.
Lake Winds PUD?
Don't we need to have new public comments again?
What's that? Yeah, we got it. We, we have to have the public comments on agenda-related items. You have to have that.
After.
No, you did, we're, we're on that right now.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure. Oh, you're going, I see, you're going after. Okay, I'm just making sure you weren't trying to make a decision. I'm sorry, Mark.
No? Maybe get testing here.
Pump the brakes, yeah, it's late.
Late. Public comments on agenda-related items. All comments and handouts from the speaker at the podium. We'll go through the chair. There will also be no interaction between the podium and audience. These rules cannot be followed. The chair can terminate this portion of the meeting. And if there's anyone would like to say something on, on the agenda, name and address, come to the podium, and you have three minutes.
Hello again, Chris Schultz, Mountmore from five hundred Second Street. I just wanted to mention one thing. I noticed when I was looking at that map. People were saying that it's uphill toward the rural track. And I know they move a lot of chemicals along that rail line. I was just wondering what would happen if there was a derailment? Would anything spill down? Or I'm just curious if it's safe or not, because it's like two hundred people right, right there. Thanks.
I think it's below.
It would be below.
Mary Melman, Yak from two sixty seven Washington. I just wanted to mention that when you listed off the concerns or what they were going to look at, you left off the sewer study.
The DVW provided that, correct?
I believe so.
So, so, just to, just to clear, oh, sorry, you're in public comments. Sorry, Mark.
Yeah, you can address that. Thank you.
Doug Park, seven two four Harvard Drive. I am a city commissioner, or county, Housing Commissioner, but I find it's a little disconcerting, some of the comments and questions. When we look back at the Water Street project, if you go back to my letter in January, I questioned, where's the public space? Oh, we don't have it. Where do kids play? We don't have any. It wasn't designed in the design. You go back to your comments to the tape, you go back to my letter. Very similar type building, very generic. Also, a lot of public concern raised about Hampton Inn going down at the beach. Very generic highway-type building. Now, we seem to be all worried about construction. We seem to be worried about parking. That, that development has less than a third of the ordinance-required parking located on its site. So, I, I just wonder where all of a sudden the change in concern comes, when all of a sudden it's public housing, even though this was public housing down here, that had no design for any outside space at all. And if I remember correctly, I, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that parking lot had one entrance and one exit.
It had two.
Yeah, or did have two. Did one come in off of water?
Yeah, it came in off there.
Came in and circled, okay. Yeah, all right. But still, that was going to be tight. So, you know, and there was never any concern brought up of that, because I remember that project came here one night, was approved, slam bam, we'll see you later. So, you know, the architect sat here, you read my questions regarding, or regarding public space, saying I had the closest property to it that was green either there or in the old hotel property, where kids going to play, where people going to walk through dogs. I already get dogs next door using my property, and I've talked to the landlord about that. So, you know, let's be consistent. You know, I understand, these are good concerns. I'm not saying that anything's wrong with them. But you have two projects that you've approved in the last six months, that you did not ask these same questions of. There's no traffic studies. The sewer was already done by, by the city. But it is, let's be consistent with what you're going to do, because you haven't been tonight. So, you know, let's keep it in mind. Thank you.
Why don't we make a forum then, Mike or Marco? When we, to ask questions of the people, so we ask the same questions. We can make a forum, all right? I mean, no big deal. Well, I mean, you know, each one is different.
It's my recollection that most of those questions were asked and answered, and things like parking were well within the ordinance, isn't that correct?
Yeah.
Is there anyone else that, in the audience, public comment?
Say something good.
Again, from one eighty-four Quincy Street. I just wanted to say, I'm a little bit confused, because there's an apartment complex being built where the old Washington School was. And I don't understand what that one is for and why this one is being built. Because that's a much better location in terms of walkability and in terms of residential area, anyway. So, anyway, thank you.